Put a call to order the regular city council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers, Dederman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kerns.
Here.
Councilmember Dederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Improvement to regular city council and committee of the whole meetings on May 27, 2025, and they be approved as published on June 10, 2025. Presentment adopted.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes?
Question for the 27th.
Okay.
I'm just curious, with a 7-0 vote, why you didn't sign the sidewalk ordinance into effect?
The sidewalk ordinance?
The sidewalk. Resolution 2025-270.
Because like we talked about during the discussion, I was of the thought that we would just send the notice to people, and that would take the liability away from the city and then let it go. I'm not sure I'm 100% on par with the sidewalk maintenance program and things like that, so that's why I did that.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Just was curious.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't 100% on board with it that way, so, yeah. But nothing crazy. All right. Anything else for the minutes? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right, chief, my question.
Council Mayor, City Administrator. Tonight I have the honor of presenting two outstanding candidates who have demonstrated exceptional determination and dedication throughout their Recruit Academy. These individuals have chosen a path of service, and we are proud to officially welcome them to the Clinton Fire Department family. First, I have Katie Grant. Katie was raised in Albany, Illinois, and is a graduate of Fulton High School. At just 17 years old, she joined the United States Army driven by a desire to serve in a courageous role where she could help and protect others. Her experience in the Army reinforced her commitment to a life of service and ultimately guided her to a career in public safety. Katie is both excited and honored to serve the community of Clinton. Tonight, she is joined by her proud parents, Chris and Sherry, and her brother Cole, who will have the privilege of performing the penning ceremony. Next, have the pleasure of introducing Cole, Grant.
What did I do? Missed something up? You're making me nervous.
Thanks for coming. Good thanks for being here, so.
I know you guys are going to be surprised, but Cole also grew up in Albany and graduated from Fulton High School. Just over a year ago, he joined the Fulton Fire Department as a volunteer, where he quickly discovered a deep passion for both fire service and emergency medical care. Since then, he has earned his EMT license and will be working towards becoming a paramedic. Cole is truly honored to join the Clinton Fire Department and serve the Clinton community. He's also joined by his parents, Chris and Sherry, and his sister Katie, and Katie will have the honor of doing his penning. Your Honor, at this time, I ask you administer the oath to our new firefighters.
I solemnly swear to do my duty as a firefighter for the Clinton Fire Department to the best of my ability to serve my commanding officer with respect and dignity, to serve the citizens of the city of Clinton with compassion, courage, and integrity, to preserve life and property from the elements of fire and disaster, to faithfully execute the core values and mission of the Clinton Fire Department, and to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States of America, the state of Iowa, and the city of Clinton.
Can you do it simultaneously or? I think this is the first time. Can you guys go up for a photo? All right, I got Ma's phone here, so get ready. Three, two, one. Just took five pictures. Check them out.
I don't know why they're doing that. You guys are going to do a picture with everybody this year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Sorry. Can I send those down real quick? All the firefighters and folks, please come up, take a picture with the brother and sister couple here. It's been five years? Seven years, see?
All right. Moving on, we have a Juneteenth proclamation. And, Marta, who do we have that's going to? All right, Marsha, come on up.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation for the group this evening. This is a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, whereas it has been over 400 years since the first Africans were enslaved and violently brought to what would become the United States, including to Florida in 1526 and to Point Comfort, Virginia in 1619. And whereas it was not until June 19, 1865, that federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas, finally emancipating enslaved Texans. And whereas news of the end of slavery traveled slowly to enslaved laborers throughout Texas, with some plantation owners keeping the news from them until after the harvest of that year. And whereas June 19 is known as Juneteenth, an acknowledgement of that fact, and to commemorate this date as the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas in 1866, emancipated communities began celebrating Juneteenth as Jubilee Day, today also known as Emancipation Day, Emancipation Celebration, Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and Juneteenth Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the continued strength and resolve of Black and African-Americans throughout our history and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and numerous contributions of Black and African-Americans. And whereas we salute the many folks both here in the city of Clinton, Clinton County, the state of Iowa, and across the United States for working diligently over the years to ensure formal recognition of Juneteenth. All 50 states and the District of Columbia have declared Juneteenth, June 19, to be a state holiday or observance. And on June 17, 2021, President Biden signed into law Juneteenth as an official national federal holiday. And whereas June 19, 2025, marks the 160th commemoration of Juneteenth. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Clinton and all Clintonians commit to engaging in actions and initiatives promoting racial equity and social justice, bringing meaning and significance to this day as we work toward a more just society. Be it finally resolved that the Clinton City Council and Mayor recognize and celebrate June 19, 2025, in commemoration of Juneteenth Independence Day.
All right. In witness whereof, I hereinto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Clinton to be affixed this 10th day of June 2025.
Thank you. And then finally, as a reminder to everyone in attendance, there will be a Juneteenth celebration. It will be Monday, June 16, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Nelson Corfield, and there will be bouncy houses. Thank you.
Would you guys like a copy of the signed one here? All right. Moving on to public hearings. We'll convene a public hearing concerning disposition of city-owned property at 428 11th Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. I was looking at that, and it says that there are some taxes that hadn't been paid on that.
Oh, I think that's the other one Rex is buying on South 6th, right?
I'm not su-- I thought when I went on that maybe they had some taxes. I was thinking maybe $300 or so, but.
Oh, okay.
You know.
I didn't look that up.
Had a, you know, had a little value on the property, so maybe we could have got a little bit more on that, and then he can pick up from there.
Well, I think he purchases it, he has to pay the taxes.
Is that correct? Is that right? Okay.
I'll double check.
All right, well, thank you. That'd be the, okay, that was perfect.
All right. Anything else for the public hearing? Do you know the answer to that?
There should be no taxes on it.
Okay.
It's tied to that, so they should have been cleared. So if I do just something that didn't clear it out.
Okay, so they took title, so taxes should be cleared then?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Anything else for the public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing sale of 428 11th Avenue South to Jason Marcus for $100. I move that this be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
What will be the timeline that he has? Tear that down. This is Eartha's fault. She got me thinking, so.
Originally, I had said by the end of July.
Okay.
Except for that was back in January.
Oh, okay.
And we were just getting to this point, so we gave him till the end of the year, which he'll get it down as quick as he can.
Okay.
He's taking it down himself, so he'll get it down as quick as he possibly can.
Okay.
But we gave him that timeframe just in case.
And that's part of the agreement, right?
Yeah.
Like, okay.
That's why he paid only $100, is he's demoing it, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Cool.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tammy.
Celebrate with fireworks, because that's a firework. December 31st.
There you go. All right. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right. Audience comment. Celeste?
Am I the only one?
You're the only one.
Well, I heard about another road you guys want to build, and I'm angry about it. Just kidding. No, no, Celeste Robbins, 2460 Barker Street. It's been really nice to see all the people and activity that have been in town over the last weekend for tailgates and tall boys. I have a Facebook page and a YouTube channel called Clinton Random. Check it out. It is kind of, the goal is to recontextualize Clinton in a more positive light in a way that is completely free and approachable. But in doing so, I've talked to a lot of citizens, and I'm not even sure if this is maybe the best way to go about this process, but a lot of people have talked about riverboat days and how much they miss it, and I am completely aware of that probably not being an option to just pick up and have happen again. But I do know that people liked the activity of tailgates and tall boys. We like a lot of the stuff that we're doing during the summer, like Music on the Avenue, Finally Fridays, all of that. But having like a central event of some sort of size seems to be something that a lot of people want to see come back, something that kind of brings people back into town and gets them re-interested, like they're coming back for this event. So that's something I would certainly be willing to help out with if you guys ever decided to pursue that, or if you reached out to me afterwards, tell me who I could talk to about it. That's it. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thanks, Celeste.
Celeste, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about that. Okay. All right. I don't have any other yellow cards. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council today on something that's not on the agenda? Oh, and no, we don't have anybody online, doesn't look like, nope. Okay. All right. Moving on to consent agenda, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from the consent agenda? All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion we receive, approve, and place on file Claims Listings 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the claims listing? Can we have roll call, please? I thought you said yes.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Summers.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the city of Clinton, Iowa, and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of $4,028,000 taxable sewer revenue capital loan notes, Series 2025 of the city of Clinton, Iowa, under the provisions of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Do we have a typo, Anita? Can you come up?
Typo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I think it's supposed to be $4,048,000.
Oh.
Not 28.
Okay. So.
We can find the 20.
No, no, remember, it's. Can we do it?
Pat, how do we? We've already made, we've already voted. Can we entertain a motion to amend that now?
I think that what we would do is a motion for reconsideration. Well, except we all voted for it. Yeah, I think we just do an amendment. Let's just vote on an amendment.
Because it's not controversial.
To the resolution and direct staff to change the wording. I think that should work.
All right. Would entertain a motion from a council member to direct staff to change that to $4,048,000 for the sewer capital loan notes.
I'll move. I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Summers, a second from Councilmember Musman. Is there any discussion on that? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a. Oh, there we are. I have a resolution to establish a public hearing for the approval of city of Clinton 25-DTR-005, Ankeny Building and 220 Fifth.
Click your button.
Sorry. Fifth Avenue South facade improvement grant, ADMI. Administration contract with East Central Intergovernmental Association, ECIA. I move that it be accepted, adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? It's pretty cool that we, that we keep getting these facade grants.
Yeah, no, this is.
Yes, exactly.
Do you want to say anything, Matt?
Yeah, so this is the, this is, this is the $650,000, and ECIA, along with Tammy, have already reached out to both owners. We're using Paul Newman, not the popcorn Paul Newman, but the Paul Newman architect. And so they're working with both owners to come up with the final design, and as we do this, we've got to work with ECIA to set a public hearing and do all the process correctly because the money's coming from the state of Iowa, so.
So when will we actually see some activity on the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
We have time to get them done, but it might be just to manage everybody's expectations. It might be next spring. But hopefully it could be soon.
That's disappointing. I'd like to see them start this year.
Well, and also because when we have these open, because I've had a couple other folks contact me about facade grants, and I haven't told them, hey, we got a hole, because when you have open facade grants, you can't take on new ones.
As quick as possible.
Yeah.
Councilmember Summers.
Yep. I was just going to ask if either one of you know what the total amount of grant money she's raised?
We could probably calculate that.
I'm just curious, because I think it's over $4 million last I added up with all the grants you brought home.
Good.
I think it's $4,048.
Good job.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG Program Contract, an acknowledgement form with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the 2025 CDBG Downtown Revitalization Facades Improvement Project. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Ditto.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution appointing of Krista Atkinson as city clerk for the city of Clinton, Iowa. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion on this?
I'm very honored, if you guys vote yes, to welcome Krista as our, as our new clerk. She's been doing it behind the scenes for quite some time, and we're excited to have her officially become the clerk of the city of Clinton.
Good. Does, do you have any words, Krista?
No. I had some questions, but I spoke with Matt ahead of time, so I'm good now.
I, I have one question.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a certification for the clerk in Iowa?
Yeah, she just went to school yesterday.
I completed all the certification, and now I just have to wait to apply.
Oh, perfect. I, I wasn't sure if there was or not. I just know that League of Cities and everybody does training and stuff, so.
And then she has to, reoccurring things every year that she has to keep up on and go back to Ames once a year and make sure she has the mandatory classes, then.
Drive to Ames for a one-hour meeting?
She did Monday, yeah. She said it's very good, though.
Congratulations, Krista.
Yep, congratulations.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Dederman. Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
I was, I was going to ask.
We need you to sign it.
Is it, is it, is it a conflict for you to record your own vote?
She's sustained.
It's got to be awkward sitting there, you know?
Just checking.
We need you to step out for me.
Congrats. Welcome. Welcome to that position. Councilmember Dederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. A resolution of intent to accept offer from busy B Properties, amount of $100,700, public hearing at the proposed sale of city-owned property located at 721 South 6th Street. Move that be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, we put all the taxes on this one.
Yeah, so, yeah, this one has all the, the back taxes. Doesn't it?
I just don't think they've cleaned it up yet.
Yeah, I don't think they cleaned it up.
Oh, it's like an.
It just recently got reverted to us.
Oh, okay.
So they'll get it fixed. We'll make sure it's taken care of.
Okay.
Cool. Rex is going to make it look beautiful.
Do it up good, Rex, so we can raise those taxes up.
All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers. Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution of intent to accept offer from Chris Frazier in the amount of $500 and setting public hearing on the proposed sale of city-owned property located at 935 11th Avenue South. I move it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Dederman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Upsting.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution placing 534 Second Avenue South on the city's demolition list. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Nice. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution placing 437 Ninth Avenue South on the city's demolition list. I move it be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? I was waiting for the pictures.
Yeah, sorry. That was the last one. Oops, here we go.
Awesome. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemmers.
Your Honor, I have, I have a resolution placing 1806 Comanche Avenue South on the city's demolition list. I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Detterman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.